Bill, can you hear me? You're muted.
Okay, we hear you loud and clear.
All of the board members are on.
We have eight members?
We have eight people.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead with the meeting. We'll welcome everybody, all eight board members. And I understand we have a number of citizen comments.
Do you not have volume?
Yeah. Bill, do you want me to do roll call?
Oh, please, yes.
Okay. Board members, please make sure your mics are off when we call your name. Bukachek?
Here.
Berg?
Here.
Hey, Bauer? I can see you talking, so I'm going to count that as a yes. There we go. Holmquist?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Noble?
Here.
Skies?
Here.
Waterman?
Here.
Awesome.
Okay, that takes us to the citizen comment section. Can you give me the latest count on how many would like to speak?
Yes, so we had 233 comments submitted through our website. Those were added to the agenda. I know we have more public comment that was submitted in the last half hour. We haven't been able to get to those, but we'll include them in when we can. And then I have 29 people who signed up to give verbal public comment. After discussing with the chair, each of those people will have 30 seconds to give their public comment. I have a timer going, and then I also have this lovely red sheet of paper. So if you're getting close to your 30 seconds, watch me, and when you see this, your time is almost up. That way, we can get through this, so the board has time for their discussion as well. All right, Bill, do you want me to start calling names?
Yes, please proceed.
All right, when I call your name, please unmute yourself. First up, we have John Tremper. Dr. Tremper, I can see you.
Okay. You hear me now?
Yes.
I just simply have a quick letter that a lot of physicians signed around the valley, and it just expresses our wish that the Flathead area has a, it just, basically, it says that we are concerned that the Flathead area has a high level of COVID infections. And it just basically says, "The undersigned physicians and healthcare providers in the Flathead area wish to express our support for additional measures to counter the rise of COVID-19 cases in the Flathead. Although we find the rising rates of infection and limited hospital beds."
Dr. Tremper?
It's not too late to connect. Procedures, and that's, that's all it says. And there's a lot of different physicians that signed it, so. And I'm here for questions, if there's any questions that need to be answered, too.
All right, next up, we have Grace Hartford. Grace, can you unmute yourself?
Carrie, would you announce who is on deck, who is the next one in, so they can be ready to go?
So Grace is next, and then Noel Drury is next after that. So right now, we're still waiting for Grace Hartford. Grace, I can see you, but it doesn't look like you have a microphone. All right, so Noel Drury, you're up next. Noel? Okay, next, we have Chris Boggs. Any comment from Chris? Well, that's going to make this go faster. George Berger? Do we have a George? John Carver?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Thank you. My name is John. I'm a food service industry professional. I just want to say that I feel that these guidelines and lockdown measures are extraordinarily unscientific. I'll just point you to the CDC's own website, for example, where they did a study that found that wearing face masks did not prevent viral transmission. I find the information to be extremely inconsistent, and we're ruining all of our lives with these measures. And don't think that health professionals will be immune from the economic fallout that is going to happen if we continue down this path. Thank you.
Next, we have Stephen Biggs.
Are we on?
I can hear you.
I was going to read my letter, but since I only have 30 seconds, I would just like to point out that an increased number of cases doesn't translate into a greater mortality rate. In fact, it's going down. The restrictions in schools is borderline ridiculous. The mortality rate in children is below 18.003, statistically zero. You know, these, we don't beat viruses. We haven't beat the flu. We haven't beat the other coronaviruses coming around here. We really need to open up, give people their ability to fend for themselves in regards to take the personal responsibility if they're in a high-risk category. They self-segregate themselves. Keep in mind, please read my, my submitted letter. Thanks.
Up next, we have Margaret Door. Margaret?
Can you see me?
I can hear you.
Okay. My name is Margaret Door, and I'm a lawyer from Washington State, where we are farther along in the lockdown process, and it's kind of destroyed our city. But anyway, I live here in Kalispell, and your order, Camille wrote me saying that your order did not mandate. Well, I'm sorry, I wasn't ready to. Anyway, if you, it's a lockdown that you're proposing, people who don't comply are subject to sanction by the code section 502-123 of the Montana Health Code. So you can force people through monetary and other means to comply with your lockdown provisions, including social distancing. That is a lockdown, and Camille is wrong. Thank you.
Next up, we have Daniel Tom. Daniel?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
I'm going to, I'm going to make my statements based on a business point of view. I have a business based here in the Flathead Valley, and we do business in Washington State, Idaho, Montana, and Wyoming. And I've seen a lot of, a lot of different ways of handling this, this whole COVID thing. And I was present in Washington when Governor Jay Inslee put on some of the initial mandates. And the chaos that ensued there was just unbelievable. We had contractors coming over from the Spokane area into the Coeur d'Alene area because they couldn't do business there. They were shut down in the Spokane area. It created a lot of, a lot of issues business-wise. And as far as from my point of view and my circle of business partners and friends and, and customers, I've never seen a death as a result of COVID-19. However, I have, I have seen two deaths because of suicide, because of business failures and so forth. And so I think, as we look at this whole thing.
Daniel, Daniel, your time is up.
Good. Thank you.
All right, Karen Gizzy. Karen, do you have public comments? Up next, we have Suzanne Moore. Suzanne, can you unmute yourself for public comments? Okay, Kelly Smith.
Hi. Okay, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, great. Good afternoon. I just wanted to record my voice as being in opposition to agendas four and five. The majority of the residents of Kalispell previously made it abundantly clear that we do not want further restrictions on churches, public gatherings, businesses, and schools. Please consider, consider the negative impact to our local economy, as well as the emotional toll that these restrictions have already placed on the people of the Flathead Valley. After viewing the various press releases on the health board website, it's actually pretty appalling for the lack of health information. If this really was about our health of our community and the health of the individuals in this community, I would expect to find things like immunity support, how we could, okay, well, thank you for your time.
All right, next up, we have Tracy Rickel.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to address this from a fact, not fear perspective. In hoping to do that, I'd like to ask Dr. Remper or anyone else to provide the Flathead County aggregate infection fatality rate for the last four months. And I would also like that same information for the 2019 flu season. Thank you. So once again, the Flathead County aggregate infection fatality rate for the last four months. In addition to that, the same information for the 2019 flu season.
Do you want me to address that?
We're just doing public comments, so we're not going to respond. Next up, we have Brendan Vlass. Brendan, are you on? Next is Lindsay DeWard. Next is Tom Bobian.
Hi, I'm just, my wife wears a mask all the time. She got the coronavirus. I don't wear a mask as frequently because I have issues with asthma. Also, if this is just directed at bars and restaurants and not all businesses across the board, isn't that some form of discrimination? I think this is baloney, that people ought to make their choices what they do. We're all going to end up with it eventually. Thank you.
Next, we have Taylor Butterfield. Is Taylor Butterfield on? Next is Bill Kozlowski. Do we have Bill? Next up is Desiree Van Echolberg. Desiree, if you want to unmute yourself? How about Kathleen Proceda? All right, next, we have Tim Harmon, who I can see. Tim, do you want to unmute yourself for public comment?
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
I can hear you.
Could you put it up to where I could unmute?
You are unmuted.
So you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. My name's Tim Harton. I'm the general manager at Majestic Valley Arena. It's obvious how this would impact our business as we are an event center. Couple of quick questions. Are we going to, if, if this passes to limit additional crowd size, are we going to get any additional help and enforcement of the protocols? Because if not, all, all, all we're doing is limiting business. If we had the help and enforcement, I don't think you would need any additional protocols. So far, the county has provided little or no help. If we could go to the governor, who mentioned that there was funding available for additional pay for law enforcement officers to come out to facilities and help enforce the protocols, otherwise, you're just making more rules that people aren't going to follow. I don't understand that. It's extremely difficult for private enterprise to take action and try to do the right thing when the very government tasked with our safety doesn't lead the way. I mean, we voluntarily suspended our calendar for 30 days, didn't have a problem doing that for trying to help public safety.
Tim, your time is up.
To hold events, and I wonder if they're being, are they being policed as much as private industry?
Your time is up. We're going to go to our next person.
Yeah, my time's up. Business time is about it. Go ahead, thank you.
Next up, we have Alan Baker. Alan, if you want to give public comments?
Thank you, Carrie. Be quick here. The proposed health order of item four makes three claims: dramatic rise in cases, related hospitalizations, deaths. Two graphs have been submitted to the Board of Health. These graphs show that cases are going down. It also shows that cases are directly linked to number of tests, that it shows that we are actually evidencing a stagnant situation. We don't need to, the tests, we don't have a surge in the virus. We have a surge in tests, hospitalizations. Is that due to the high sensitivity to this issue, maybe liability concerns? The same patients have been submitted this time last year. CDC numbers show that 6% of COVID deaths are only, only 6% are given to just COVID. That means that there's been only two deaths, up to 27 cited, and even if we give it 10%, that's only three. This is the same health order supposedly submitted, and was already voted down. The situation has only improved since then. Legal concerns discovered over two weeks ago are still at hand. Board members' concerns have not been addressed, like what happens if the crowd grows beyond 25. Simply put, the data shows there's no justification for item four. Item five is invalid, as it's based on similar incorrect assertions. I would actually move, based on looking at the data.
Your time is up, if you can wrap up. All right, next, we have Thomas Millet.
Sorry, go ahead.
Next, we have Thomas Millet. Thomas?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Thomas, are you still there? We can hear you.
I'm here. Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, how much time do I have? Is it one minute?
30 seconds.
Oh, wow, 30 seconds. Okay, so I previously sent comments in of a limited nature, and, you know, I'm not going to reiterate them there, but I'll just say real quickly that I don't believe that the constitutions, the data, and what this, these things, these restrictions, will do in terms of physical and mental costs suffered by those most affected, namely, business owners, employees, and the community at large. I just asked that the board, please engage your brains as to the data and the best available scientific evidence, and ask the tough questions, because you're about to destroy livelihoods, and you could destroy people's lives, too. Just think about what you do. Thank you very much.
Here, here.
Next, we have Lisa Hile.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you.
Yeah, I'm here with my husband, so two, two votes for, we did want to show up, it was going to be brief anyway, in favor of the proposal. I know one of the big concerns with the churches, and you had some other concerns, and you reworked this that addressed, in a way that addressed these concerns. And I'm looking forward to things like the Christmas show that saw 6,000 people last year at the fairgrounds. And even if our numbers are getting better, something like that is going to be a super-spreader, and in the winter, that is going to be a disaster. So we are here speaking up in favor of the proposal. Thank you.
Next is Loretta Holgate. Loretta? Next, we have Travis Honor, who signed up for public comment, but I don't think he meant to. Travis?
No, I'm just available, sorry, I'm just available to answer questions from the board. Thanks.
And last, we have Claire Roth. Claire? All right, that's everybody. Bill, back to you.
Okay. Okay. Before we get into item three, I think it's appropriate to discuss the current happenings and recent history since last we met. First thing that I've done is I have created a new committee, new standing committee, and I've called it the COVID Committee. And I've asked Dr. Pete to share that. He said yes, and I'm delighted with that, and we've appointed a couple of new committee members. And it will cover everything COVID that we're now experiencing. And the transition to the next phase, which is the vaccination phase, which is probably going to start, and it's actually, the planning is already started. Carrie is the most knowledgeable, so Carrie, I'll ask you to speak briefly about some of the things that you're involved in now, planning for the next phase of COVID.
So we are going to be continuing to do case investigations, but we also have to plan for how we will provide vaccines when there is a COVID vaccine. The best information we have right now is that the state will be providing the vaccine to us at no cost, so we will be able to distribute it. There are two vaccines that are anticipated to be approved. Both of them are a two-dose series, which means that we're going to have to be out and about. It's going to take a lot of, of staff hours to make the vaccine available. We have been planning locations, and we also have been planning how to prioritize vaccine when we get it. So priority populations include immunocompromised people, but also include frontline workers, like hospital staff. So I would just say that we're looking at adding additional functions for a health department that is already doing quite a bit of extra work, and that's what we're, what we're nervous about going into the winter.
Do you anticipate the demands on personnel will stay the same or increase?
So demands on personnel will increase, because we will have to keep doing case investigation, and we will have to add mass deployment of vaccine. So we will need our nurses to be vaccinators, which means we will have fewer nurses to do nursing home outbreaks, which is something our nurses are doing right now in COVID. So it will be a staffing issue.
I recall that you said that there'll be two vaccines, and from prior conversations, I recall you said that one of them requires to be maintained at 80 degrees Celsius below zero.
Yes, one is, they're both super-cold vaccines, so one of them is negative 80 degrees Celsius. The other one is at a different, very cold temperature, which just poses additional logistical problems. There is a short period of time that those vaccines can be out of that super-cold environment. We can pack them with dry ice. Again, that helps extend the, the period of time we are facing a dry ice shortage. Again, more logistical challenges.
To avoid scaring anybody, they are not administered at that temperature, is that correct?
Correct. Yes.
And 80 degrees Celsius below zero.
Negative 80 degrees Celsius is where one of the vaccines is stored.
Celsius is the same measure as centigrade. When we compare it to 40, 40 Fahrenheit, 40 degrees Celsius below zero is exactly the same as 40 degrees Celsius below zero. Correct?
Yes.
Minus 40 equals minus 40.
Yes, that is the one point where they're the same.
Is well over 100 degrees Fahrenheit below zero.
Yes, that's correct.
Special handling equipment.
Yes, it's, it's like dry ice, yes.
And to warm them up and other things. The health officer has asked to make a statement.
I just wanted to address some of the numbers. The graphs that were sent out last week did not include our, the last week, which would be the October 25th through the 31st. We actually had 564 cases this past week, which was, is, has been our biggest week so far since the outbreak. Our, for the last five weeks, our incident rate per 100,000, the first week in October was 32, then it went to 51, then it was 47, 39, so we did have two weeks that went down. And then last week, it was at 53. So we have had a large spike in cases. And it's not, there seems to be a little bit of confusion, I can tell from the, the comments. What we are proposing today doesn't have anything to do with bars and restaurants. So that's not in anything that we're addressing today. The other thing I want to talk about is when you talk about the number of deaths, that, that's really not the issue right now. The, the issue is the number of cases that we're getting, and then we have to quarantine those cases, and we have to do investigation of close contacts. And then we have to take those close, close contacts and put them in quarantine for 14 days. So what's happening in our community is we're having so many cases that, in the schools, for instance, when we have one positive, that takes probably 10 to 15 other kids out for 14 days. And same in the hospital, when there's a hospital worker that is either has COVID or is a contact, they have to be taken out of the workplace. So if it gets to a point where the schools have so many staff out that they can't man the schools, then the kids have to go to remote, then the parents have to stay home with the kids, and then they can't work in their businesses, so the businesses lose their staffing, and the hospitals lose their staffing as well. So it doesn't have much to do with the, the death rate. It has more to do with the domino effect of, we have so many cases in our community, what it does to our staffing issues for schools, staff, businesses, and the hospitals.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I make a comment about the capacity indicators while, while Camille or Carrie has that table up. I made a physical copy of the table that we had prior to today, and October 26th to the 29th had 310. Maybe that wasn't a complete week, but the data that we were given prior to just now, it showed that the, the peak was 560, October 5th to 11th. And I sent you another table of the number of tests done, and that peak correlated exactly on the week with a peak of testing done. And, and without correlating the number of positive tests with the number of tests done, there's no capacity to make an intelligent analysis of it. I also wanted to point out to the, to the public, which is something that the board members are all aware of, a case, quote, end of quote, just means a positive test. And an active case, quote, unquote, simply means somebody who tested positive who is being quarantined, which is all positive tests. So it does not, none of those numbers indicate that a person is even sick. Many people get things done because they have to get a procedure at the hospital. Many, some people that work in nursing homes are tested once a week, and many people that are getting tested is because of contact tracing. So it is a misperception to say that those are cases. We've never called cases positive tests of healthy people.
All those positive tests are transmissible cases, correct?
Yeah. Yes. There's no evidence, there's no evidence that that's the case. There's no data to support that.
So if I could also interject, we investigate, cases mean someone who's in
If I could also interject, we investigate cases mean someone who's infectious. So we have many other diseases that we would consider a case, even when they're not infectious. I think most people know the story of Typhoid Mary, you know, who was an asymptomatic carrier who killed a whole lot of people. That is the foundation of epidemiology. We are looking for people who are infectious.
Carrie, could you take us to the county website that displays the number of cases?
Which is equivalent to the number of positive tests.
Yes, that is correct. The number of people who have tested positive.
So we see from the screen, Flathead cases are slightly more than 10% of Montana. And that's true of our population, it's almost exactly 10%. And can you scroll down a bit? The one that shows the, that shows a graphic, and is that updated? It's really difficult. It's a seven-day average. Can you go to the screen that shows the actual number of cases? And those that have?
So we have new cases. And then here's our currently active cases.
Can you go to the graphic that I created?
Yes.
The Excel spreadsheet. And while you're doing that, I'll relate to the, the source of the data is the county's website on a daily basis. It's updated about 10 o'clock every day. So what we'll be looking at is the data from Sunday, yesterday. If I remember correctly, the number of cases set a new record. Go to the bottom half of that, if you will. Scroll down. These are the number of cases by day. Total cases is in column F. New cases today is the arithmetic difference between yesterday and today, so it'd be Saturday and Sunday. New cases this period is since, as you can see at the top, October 16th was the last board meeting where I introduced this concept. It appeared to me that for the last four periods, months at that time, cases were doubling every month. And over on the right-hand side in column K, total projected cases this period, which is the total cases so far this month, divided by a fraction, which is based on the number of, this case, 30-day period. So we're 16 days through it, so it's approximately doubling. So we're projecting 2466 by the end of the 30 days from 1016, that'd be November 16th, but not quite November 16th, it's November 14th. So if you go to the top portion of it, so scroll up. And what is displayed here in yellow in the first four lines is what I observed from the website. From the middle of June to middle of July, July to August, August to September, September to October, the numbers are rounded to, but not by very much to give an idea of doubling. So it's from 250 to 500 to 1,000. And on line 14 from last month, I said if it doubles again, it'll get 2,000. We're now projecting 2385 as of yesterday. So it's more than doubling in the last period. If it doubles again, I don't know if it will, there are a lot of moving parts, 4,000, 8,000, 16,000. And you can see the total, if that happens, I hope it slows down. I expect it'll slow down for a number of reasons, but this is what doubling does. And that's why it's important to maintain distance, social distance, wear your mask, wash your hands, and do the other recommendations of the department.
The numbers of people tested has more.
I haven't finished speaking. I'll grant you an opportunity. I want to reinforce for the people that are listening, us, the health officer, have we closed, are there any restrictions that are imposed in Flathead that did not originate with the governor? Is there anything new that we have imposed here?
No.
Have we closed any businesses in the Flathead by direction of the health officer in the Flathead Valley?
No.
Have we closed any churches for the same, by direction, in the Flathead Valley?
No.
Have we in any way significantly restricted constitutional rights, like the right to assemble?
No.
Have we restricted anybody's right to speak and petition their government?
No.
Have we in any way significantly restricted the right to worship?
No.
On a permanent basis?
No. The governor has, but we have not.
Gun rights is one of those rights that we have that's enshrined in the Bill of Rights. Have we restricted anybody from owning or using a firearm?
No.
Do we restrict the right of hunters by requesting and demanding that they wear orange?
Yes.
And that's a reasonable restriction, I think, to save lives. It doesn't originate here in the health department. I think it originates as a result of the legislature. Okay, let me open it up to general observations for members of the board. Dr. Anna, you've spoken once, if you want to speak another.
Yes, I'll be brief, but I just wanted to point out that the doubling in cases, which means doubling of positive tests, the number of tests actually performed more than doubled. And again, those are not sick people. Regarding the right to assemble, the right to worship, gun rights, those kinds of things, when churches shut down out of fear of the health department, not necessarily out of fear of a virus, but out of fear of the health department, and I've talked to pastors, I know a lot of pastors, okay, that is infringing on the right to assemble. When the gun show was shut down in March by the person who was the health officer at the time, I mean, that gun show was shut down, I know for a fact, and Hillary Hanson didn't deny it when I contacted her. And there were multiple other large gatherings that were shut down in March. I realize that was then, this is now, but to say that none of our rights have been infringed upon is absolutely false.
The point was, have any of them been permanently restricted? They are temporary restrictions. In the case of the use of guns, there are reasonable restrictions that are imposed by government. Here, we're doing something similar, but it's not permanent. Anybody else on the board would like to speak?
Yeah, this is Pam Homequist. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Could you bring Bill's chart back up, please? Bill, I've been making a spreadsheet since August 5th, and I'll gladly share that with you at some, you know, when I can, through email or whatever. Go down to the next page, please. And you talk about new cases on a certain date. And I've been taking data that I get, that I get from Lisa Dennison every day on new cases, and your numbers are not correct. So I don't know where you got the numbers from, but I gladly share what Lisa has given me every day since August 5th. So just, you know, just so you know that, I'll share it with you, and then you can update your stuff if you agree. And then you asked Tamalee a question about any new rule, anything changes with the new rule over and above the governor. The only thing that changes that I'm aware of is the governor's mandate or directive is, is not, what am I trying to say, is not the rule of law. It's a suggestion. But if you go to this rule and you pass a rule through the health officer, then it does become mandatory. So there, that is the difference between what the governor did and what we may do today, is that it now is mandatory where it was a suggestion before. So just a couple of points I'd like to make, but thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. Let me clarify again. The numbers that are on this page came from the website on the date that is noted. And I've noticed small differences in Lisa's daily reports and these, I can't account for those, but over the period of 16 or 17 days, those plus or minuses all average out. And the official numbers, if you look today, it won't be the 3615, because that was as of yesterday. It's now 3686. So it's gone up by 71 more numbers.
Yeah, I don't, are you getting these off the state website?
No, it's the county's website.
Okay. Well, I don't know, there's certainly discrepancies, for sure.
They're pulled at different points of the day, and that's why there's discrepancies, but we reconcile the numbers several times a week.
Well, it's still, still my numbers don't add up to what these numbers do. So anyway, that's just a, I'll share it with you when I have, and we'll try to figure it out.
Okay, thank you, Pam.
Yep.
Any other member of the board would like to speak? I've never seen this board be so silent.
I've always got more to say.
Can you hear me?
You've been so kind to me.
Yep. Dr. Pete is asking for the floor.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So I guess just a couple of things, because I think this needs to be clear in the record about cases and how they're tested and just, let's just make sure that we're all starting on the same ground. Firstly, positive cases are cases of people who have the virus, and we all can agree that there is a wide variety in how symptomatic those folks can be. The point is that positive case is tested to have the virus. This is the exact same as HIV. Somebody who is HIV-positive may be tested to have HIV virus. They may not be sick from it as of yet, but they have the virus and can transmit it to other people by having sex. Same goes for hepatitis C. It's a virus that is detected often in patients who are asymptomatic, but who, if left untreated, may develop liver failure over time. And in an asymptomatic phase, can pass on hepatitis C to other people. So this is not a unique situation. We have several examples within medicine where people are positive carriers of a disease, maybe even unbeknownst to them, but can pass that, but can transmit that virus to another person. So for us to, for there be such an outcry of issues of calling people positive cases or questioning that, whether or not that's a true measure of disease in the community, just continues to baffle me. Secondly, I want to point out the fact that the rise in cases is purely not due to increase in testing, which is very clear by the lower graph that shows an increase in positive rate over time. That was a gradual increase and to, which has peaked above 12% as a positivity rate over time. So it's not just due to increased testing, it's a positive increase rate, which of positive tests that we've seen as well. So I mean, these are a couple of points that have been, continued to be brought up, and I think we really just need to move beyond those in our discussion. I think there's people who are going to continue, may continue to disagree with that, and I don't know if those people can be convinced otherwise, but I think most of us would agree that a case, even though variable in its presentation, we still would consider to be infectious and have, and have the virus as best as we can detect it. And then also that the rise in case is not purely due to increased testing, although admittedly, certainly that contributes to part of it, but certainly is far from the whole story, as can be seen in the increased positivity rate on that lower graph. So I think, I think we need to put, we need to put those false arguments behind us and move on to where we can really have, have good discussion and really reasonable debate as to what we need to do with our, with the situation. And I'd like to yield the floor at this point.
I'd like to comment on what you called a false argument. I mean, the validity of PCR testing for COVID at a minimum is frankly controversial. I mean, and that's based on epidemiologists, physicians in this country and worldwide. It's at a minimum controversial. You know, that's not the same as tests that we do that are confirmatory of other, of other tests. It usually requires a confirmation test. So you're calling it a false argument is really ignoring the science.
Annie, what is the confirmatory test for hepatitis C and HIV? It's PCR.
And the inventor of PCR testing himself, he passed away August 2019, he himself, he got a Nobel Peace Prize, or excuse me, Nobel Prize for science for inventing that test, and he said it's meaningless when it comes to diagnosing infectious disease. And he was referring specifically to HIV. He said it was meaningless.
We use, we use PCR testing for infectious diseases across the board. They have replaced, they have replaced cultures in most of our hospital settings and lab settings due to the accuracy and the speed at which they can be reported. PCRs are commonplace and standard of care in infectious disease diagnoses. And so whether or not that was the initial intention when PCR was developed, sure, no, it was not, but that's, that happens in invention in medicine all the time. Viagra wasn't meant to be an ED medicine. Viagra was studied for pulmonary hypertension. It just happened to have this remarkable side effect that people really found beneficial and opened it up to a whole new, to a whole new use. The same thing with PCR. Even though that was not the initial use, it is commonplace and it is standard of care and use across medical, across medical practice.
You asked specifically about HIV and the inventor of PCR.
Dr. Granny, would you please suspend?
Okay.
We've heard this, these dueling banjo issues for more than several weeks. We've heard from the two doctors on our, on our committee. I'd like, Carrie, would you call the other members and ask if they have anything further? And then, and then we'll move to the question.
Ronalee wanted to say something.
Actually, I'm just back to the item that we're looking at, and that is the numbers and the projection. I have a question about the current 564 cases this week. What are the severity of the cases? How many are in the hospital? And how many are treating at home through isolation? How many are being treated? I guess just to understand the numbers that we're looking at, which is the item we're on, on the agenda is the numbers, what are the severity of these new cases? And how many do we have currently in the hospital? And then what are the severity of those that are in the hospital? How many are on ventilators? How many are in ICU, please?
Excellent. Tamalee, will you please try to respond?
We have 27 currently in the hospital, and 17 of those are Flathead County residents. I do not know how many are on ventilators. So I can't tell you that part.
Where did you pull that up?
Is there somebody on the call that represents the hospital? Is Dr. Jaden on the call?
You can.
No, Dr. Jaden is not on the call. I think what we have also seen is about 20% of our positive cases, this is an estimate that changes week by week, are mostly asymptomatic. So they're either totally asymptomatic, or they only have symptoms like loss of taste or smell. They're people who are not sick. So it's about 20% of the total.
And we currently have about 780, 790 that are active cases. That means they were, they tested positive, and then they are, they're infectious for 10 days past onset of signs and symptoms. So if you multiply that out, each case, if you, an average of five other contacts, so the people being monitored would be five times 792. That's how many we would actively be monitoring at this point in time.
All right, and again, continuing on the item that we're looking at, that is the current plus the projections. At what point do we think that we will get to a tipping point on those? At what point do we think that we will get to a tipping point on those numbers?
I don't know how you could, I mean, if we could answer that.
I guess at what point do we start to where everybody has either been tested or has been tested positive or is in that twenty percent asymptomatic who has been watched and determined that they are not going to need to be put on ventilators? At what point do we actually see that we've hit, at the point where we're looking at the numbers going backwards? If we're looking at projections and we're trying to make determinations on policy as it relates to what we think is going to happen, is there a time that we think we're going to hit that, that, that number that we're going to start seeing it say, okay, we've hit already a large number or nearly at this point, almost everybody in the school systems, everybody in our community? So I guess before we're looking at policy, I want to know what point do we think that we're actually already have enough people who have tested positive or who are asymptomatic in our community?
What you're looking for in mathematical terms is called an inflection point. The curve that we saw on the graph is concave upward, and it's getting steeper. The easiest statistic to cite, and it's, it's important, and that's the number of deaths. The number of deaths divided by the total number of cases is dramatically going down. Couple months ago, nationally, it was two percent. Our own experience here, it's about point eight percent. And it's a lagging indicator because deaths obviously lag the incidence of the disease. Perhaps one of the doctors involved in the hospital work, Dr. Pete maybe have a better statistic now of what's happening, the number of deaths divided by the number of patients that have entered the hospital in some relevant term, in a time term. My best guess is probably less than a half a percent today. So it's moving in the right direction. But at the same time, there are a lot of people getting sick, and they're not as sick as measured by the deaths being down. But it is important to protect people from illness as it is to protect them from death. Dr. Pete, can you speak to the severity of the illnesses now compared to what it used to be and what you expect in the future?
Yeah, I can speak to, I can speak to the fact that we are getting better at, at treating this and which I, which as you point out, puts our, the death rate has, has decreased. And so there certainly is some, there is certainly some hope in regards to that. I think the last I checked for hospitalization rate at seven percent, I think was still, was what was quoted, I think, to us last, was quoted to us last board meeting of the hospitalization, hospitalization rate for positive testing. I think one thing that we need to, to keep in mind as well, like what you pointed out, is not just the, the death rate, but also the morbidity of patients and some of them who are coming out hospitalized and, and remaining to be severely ill for several weeks after and feeling some, certainly some long-term effects from this. So, and, and how that's going to continue to shake out, we're still, we're still learning as a medical community as to what that is looking like in, you know, as far as people who are taking several weeks to, to recover or who have longer-term morbidity and decrease in function as a, as a result. I don't know if that answered your question, though. Can you, did you want to re, if you want to re-ask me again, I can try and answer it more specifically.
Well, I think you did a very good job of doing that. People, the simple answer, that people are getting COVID are not as sick as they were a month or two or three months ago. There are more recoveries, and it seems to be the, the, the illnesses that they have are less severe. All of those are good signs.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think I would say, I would, I would say that the, the death rate is improving. And, and I think, and, and we've gotten better at taking care of that. But we still, but there's still a number of people who get severely, severely ill. And I, and that's the, as, as somebody who's taken care of a number of patients with this and who are recovering, it, the, that's the, that's the crazy thing about this virus is the wide, is the wide disparity in, or of how people present with it from mildly symptomatic to, or asymptomatic to, you know, to very, to barely, nearly dead. And some of those people are still getting very, very ill from it. We are still certainly seeing that.
Thank you.
So I guess then the, my next question, and I won't take up a whole lot of time with questions, but I am looking at a lot of the public comment on both sides of this. And I want to be able to ask some of the questions that we've been asked in public comment. And one is, when you're looking at the projections, you're looking at the cases, where we are, where we've been. And then with the projections, where we're going. To what point are we going? And I guess that goes back to my tipping point. If originally, we were looking at flattening the curve so that we could protect our healthcare systems. We've gotten better at treating COVID. We've gotten better at helping people stay healthy, stay in their home, which is all good things. What is the next thing? Are we trying to help people not to get sick? And is that something that realistically during flu season that we can do? Again, I'm just asking these questions. I'm not trying to pick an argument with anybody. But these are some of the questions we're being asked. Are we trying to take away all opportunity for people to have a productive life in hopes of keeping them from having any illness hit them?
I, I, I think that one of the things that we're trying to do is like, is to keep our schools open. And we heard from the superintendent last meeting that that's in serious jeopardy with, with the, keeping the teacher pool and kids in classes to, to having them out on quarantine and to at least keep the virus transmission low enough so that we have a pool of teachers that's in school allowing the, allowing our kids to stay there. Because otherwise, the economic fallout of having schools closed down again is going to be disastrous.
All right, thank you for answering my question.
Who else on the board would like to speak?
Sure, I'll just jump in real quick. I mean, I agree with Dr. Pete. I mean, our large testimony and some of the work there was from our schools and again, from our hospitals and our frontline workers who were meeting capacity. I mean, I, I guess I look at the numbers in the couple of weeks that we've had, and we are seeing a rise in numbers and not getting those down low. We've seen states like Florida, which had similar spikes in per capita, be able to get on top of their numbers and start to bring them down. So we haven't seen a peak. And we are starting to, we still have public comment and about our capacity issues in hospitals, schools, being able to keep things open and how we're going to be able to do that. So I do see, I do see those. I see the numbers going up, but I also see what our goals are of trying to keep not overwhelming some systems, which would then, my understanding would be, would affect, if we're not able to, if we meet, meet capacity of the hospital, especially as we are with Glacier County numbers going up, we're going to start to see a difference when it comes down to death rates.
Let me add to that. Simplistically, for me, we're trying to slow the spread of the infection. We have a hundred and six thousand people in the county. Every time the number of infected people goes up, we have a larger number of spreaders. And in the early period, a very small reduction in the population that can get the virus. So far, we've had several thousand people contacted, contacted, contracted, which means we have probably a hundred and two thousand people who are potential people to get the virus. As the number of people who get it goes up, the number of people who can get it goes down. Until at some point, there aren't enough people, the relationship to the spreaders, to the receivers reverses. So there are too few people to get it in the future, and the rate of spread will start going down. And eventually, we get herd immunity. Or even more hopeful is, six to eight weeks from now, we'll begin, we will begin the vaccination period, which will decrease the number of people who are potential carriers of the disease.
May I speak as a physician who sees patients, outpatients? That's my work is all outpatient, and I've had patients test with COVID, tested COVID positive. May I comment?
Oh, sure, go ahead.
Oh, sure, appreciate it. So in my experience, what I've seen is with my patients, they, the ones that have been hospitalized, and it's called a COVID hospitalization, they were actually hospitalized for something else, like a bone fracture, something like that. And they happened to test positive. And that includes one of my patients in her nineties that actually had infiltrates on her lungs, but her oxygen level is ninety-nine percent. She went home in three days, okay? So, you know, I've been a doctor over thirty years. I've taken care of viral syndrome patients for that long. Most people get sniffles or loss of smell. I'm talking about the last thirty years. Sometimes people get sick enough to miss work or school, and I've seen patients like that. Occasionally, they're hospitalized and close to a hundred percent survive. I see this as no difference. And I think Ronald Lee brought up an important point that we need to compare to prior years. You know, viruses happen, people get sick, sometimes people die. The pattern this year is no different. In fact, my patients have done better from an infectious disease standpoint.
Okay, thank you. Artis, do you have any more comments or questions?
No, I don't have any comments or questions at this time.
Thank you. And Roger?
No, I don't, I don't have any more comments. I, I guess I kind of share the thought process that it's a, I'm concerned about the trickle-down effect of the schools closing down, and then that affects the businesses. And I've seen that firsthand in our business, where then we've had employees that have had to stay home. And that totally shuts down the business or slows the business process. So seems like to me the way to, it's an infectious disease, and the way to slow the spread is to, to, you know, stop some of the super-spreading gatherings.
Can I, can I say something real quick before I have to go back to work and patients?
Dr. Temper, go ahead.
Yeah, so several of us were in the hospital yesterday. And they have a COVID unit that's roughly thirty beds. And twenty-nine of them were filled, and they were all on respirators. So there's only one bed left. So don't want to be the one that's thirty-first. So I just thought I'd give you that information, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you for listening.
Pam, you haven't spoken for a while. Do you want to be the, the one to wind this up? Carrie, is Pam still on?
Here we go. How's that? Is that better?
Yep, I can see you.
Okay, so, yeah, we're just talking numbers right now and graphs. But when we get to the rule, then I'll have more to say. Thank you.
Well, let's move to the rule, item number three. Carrie, can you put it on the screen or the operative portions of it? And that's the summary. Can you get down to the, I'm fumbling with my own copy. I think the operative portions are at the bottom on my page two, and then on page three. Can you highlight those? There we go. And for the people that may not have the video, can you read them? Can't start with the effective date?
Do you want me to read it, Phil?
Yes, please, be with.
Okay. Effective at eleven fifty-nine PM November third and until eleven fifty-nine PM on January thirty-first, two, twenty twenty. Indoor events and gatherings will be limited to no more than five hundred people. And events and gatherings between fifty and four hundred and ninety-nine people must adhere to the following. Submit on Flathead City County Health Department a detailed plan outlining protective measures and environmental controls to reduce the risk of disease transmission at least fourteen days prior to the event or gathering. Maintain strict physical distancing of six feet between individuals or between groups of family members. Follow guidance provided by the Flathead City County Health Department regarding event planning. The event sponsor is responsible for ensuring plan is adhered to at the time of the event or gathering. School sanctioned sports and activities are not subject to this order. Youth activities includes all youth participants, coaches, trainers, and officials necessary for the youth activity. Spectators of youth activities shall be subject to this guidance and requirements of their respective schools, school districts, or organizational entities. And traditional worship services are not subject to this order and will continue to follow guidelines stated in Governor Bullock's Phase Two reopening plan. Church events, other than regularly scheduled services, will be required to submit a plan for review.
Oh, let me ask for emphasis. Church services are exempt, normal ones?
Yes.
Okay. I'm thinking of Whitefish now during winter carnival, even though that's next year, or next calendar year. They have a great pie social. Would that be exempt?
No. So the regularly scheduled worship services are exempt, but not additional events like a pie social put on by a church.
Does anybody have a, let's go back to the first one under effective dates. Applies to indoor events only?
This needs to be changed to twenty twenty-one.
Okay. I would just advise that there is a typo in that under the word effective. It says twenty twenty, it should be twenty twenty-one.
I even read it out loud, and I still didn't notice.
So this applies to indoor events right after the word twenty twenty. And if it's, it applies to indoor, it doesn't say outdoor exempt. But outdoor events are not applicable. Is that correct? So big mountain skiing activities would not be subject to this, this particular paragraph.
Correct.
Okay. Any other comments? This is the comment period.
My biggest comment, I mean, this is very similar to the proposal that we had a couple of weeks ago, which we did raise those questions about churches. And we did raise those questions about outdoor events and how this would affect specifically the ski hill. So I, I'm comfortable with the changes that are made because I think it really gives some clear definition to the scope that we're looking at. And that this is for indoor only. And it also then gives those larger venues. I mean, this is a pretty, I think, a generous size. But it gives people those larger events, five hundred plus, clear notice that they need to make alternate plans or not schedule those events.
And in order for them to approve, all we have to do is submit a good plan that, that conforms with what the governor's mandate is.
Which is what we already have to do. And I think that that's, again, I mean, I think that's putting out a reasonable expectation. But I, I, we raised these concerns, and I'm glad that the department looked at them.
Carrie, would you go around, go around the committee and make sure everybody has an opportunity to affirmatively speak?
Yep, so up first, we have Bukacek.
I'd appreciate if we could hear from Travis Honor again. The last time that we addressed
because the last time that we addressed this, we didn't, I mean, it's, a lot of people will be very happy that churches are not included, that ski resorts are not included. I mean, this does address those specific items that Travis Honor did address last time. But the other thing that Travis, the other testimony that he gave, was he said, "To do something like this," I don't remember, I don't think he used the word "prove," but you have to show that it's an imminent threat.
Yeah, but Dr. Annie, just to interrupt, I mean, that was when we were talking about 25% closing down of venues. This is not that proposal. Travis was giving advice about that proposal, which is not this proposal. So.
To correct you, that one was taken off the agenda, so Travis did not address it last time. So, he said it has to be an imminent threat provable by data and science. With that said, a minimum is controversial, whether it's proven by data or science. And the response of the health department has to be proportional to the threat. And he also said that his office, they would use their discretion. He didn't say they're not going to enforce, but he said they would use their discretion. And we already, I think it's pretty well-known, the sheriff's department's not. So, again, this is not, it's not enforceable. And you could see by the comments, I mean, it was 10 public comments against on this meeting, and against the restrictions, 2 for. And people are not, they haven't been abiding by these already, and they aren't being enforced. And the public doesn't want it. So, anyway, that's my view on it, and I would like to hear Travis Honor comment and see if he thinks any differently in terms of enforceability and the potential for lawsuits if we continue on this. Because that's another thing Travis Honor talked about last time.
Well, let's go around and finish the committee member comments.
Haybar, if you want to go next?
Sure, yeah, so, I mean, I think, I think this is actually a good measure in how we are, the Public Health Department is wanting to partner with groups who are still wanting to have events in a responsible way, and gives them the opportunity to do so, but then again reinforces the point about, about needing to submit a plan, and puts the onus then on that event organizer to follow that safety plan. So, I think that that really allows our community partners the opportunity to proceed with some of their events, and if they can do that in a safe way, that does not put other people at risk. And just acknowledging that, you know, 500 number has just seemed, that's a very conservative number, for sure. And obviously, there's other places around the country where things have been more restrictive than that. And I hope this, I hope this does affects the immediate threat that we mostly all agree we are facing at the moment, and to any, to decrease the burden on our healthcare system, and because it would just takes one, one of those events where it might trigger 30 or 40 people that could have huge domino effects and health implications for the greater society at large. So, I think this is a very reasonable step to take.
Next is Homquest.
Sure, thanks for the opportunity. I think, I think all of us recognize and are concerned about the fatigue of our healthcare community and our staff, and frankly, the population out there. Everybody's been dealing with this for nine months, and it's been difficult. But what we do, when we do this, if this goes forward as a rule, as I mentioned before, it does not, it's not suggestion anymore, it becomes mandatory. And I guess I would ask maybe Tamalee, so, how, how will this be enforced in a meaningful way? Yeah, let's answer that one first. I have more, but let's do that first.
I think Travis could answer the question. I believe it's applying, is that, is that true, Travis?
There's a, I'm sorry, can folks hear me? Can you hear me, Tamalee?
Yes.
Okay, there's a, there's a couple of different provisions in the code in terms of the possibilities for enforcement on this. This, this would most likely come more through our office rather than something that the governor's office could step in on. But there's the possibility of civil attempts at enforcement in advance, so injunctions, there's after-the-fact type enforcement, which would be looking at more fines for failure to compliance, or for a steady sort of event that's, or a situation where a gathering is routinely out of compliance. And then there's, the provisions also include the options for criminal enforcement. All of those have myriad issues that would have to be taken into account in terms of approaching this. So, that's with regards to enforcement, and I, since I'm already chatting, I will say, and again, I don't want it at all be construed as advocating for one position or another on this. That's not my role in this matter. There is, with regards to this restriction, just as any of you were looking at, you know, capacities at bars and taverns, that sort of thing, there is a proof that has to be established on these things. Just a couple of basic considerations. Again, this would take forever to go into all the nuances, but a couple of considerations. The tighter those restrictions, then the harder you're going to have to, that a court's going to look at it. So, the difference again between drawing this event size at 500 versus 250 versus 100 people, the more significant that restriction, then the more significant data is going to be needed to do that. But also, there's going to be issues with proving that you're in a situation that triggers your authority, that the step that you've taken is, even after your authority's been triggered, the step that you're taking is appropriate. And then, depending on what you're trying to enforce, how you're going about that, the, if you're looking at injunctions or stopping somebody, again, there's going to be proof that's needed. It sounds like you folks know that, and again, that's, that's sort of where we're at. I know Tamalee received a subpoena with regards to one of these other injunctions that the governor's office is seeking. So, it is something that regardless of this rule versus some of the other stuff that you're looking at, it's something that, okay, if government's going to try and make a rule, then, then it's going to have to be defendable through data and facts.
Okay, if I could say a little more than inject in there, first of all, I just want to let everybody know, I talked to Travis this morning, and correct me if I'm wrong, Travis, but your office is spending a lot of resources and time just dealing with the five injunctions that were put in place by the governor. And, and this all takes a lot of time in your office, and if we can, if we go down this path, and we get a lot of, of, I don't know what you'd call them, if we're going to do citations or whatever we're going to do, I don't know how that's going to affect your office. I would assume it's going to be pretty difficult. And also, the enforcement, of course, will be, most likely be challenged, and I think that could lead to potential costs to the taxpayer, so.
So, yeah, Pam, first of all, my office is not involved in the injunctions that the governor has sought. He sought a total of five injunctions against businesses. None have been granted. I looked at the court filings this morning, just a few minutes before this event. You have a handful of attorneys on, on the government side, per case, one or two on the other side. The lowest number of filings before, and they haven't had a hearing yet, but they're at 12 on the lowest end, 24 filings on the highest end. So, the bottom line with regards to those, those and any sort of enforcement, it's not cut and dry. The, it's, it's pretty clear that our court is balancing sort of the goals of enforcement and the goals of trying to deal with this COVID situation, but trying to balance that with rights of citizens, because they've not issued injunctions, they've set hearings. All of those have been continued at either the governance, governor's request, or with his approval. So, it's not a cut and dry situation. It is an intensive resource. It's an intensive use of resources. And so, that's why you have to pick and choose and be careful about how you're going to apply that. But again, I'm not sure this, this board, of course, that has, you folks have to keep that in mind, but, but your decisions are still going to be more health-driven rather than looking at the, sort of the problems of enforcement.
Okay, and you don't have to answer this, but I mentioned the MCA before that's listed in the rule 50-2-123. And I think we already discussed that at length the last time. I just want to reiterate that that is very vague, and it's going to be very difficult to interpret. I do agree that this, this could be taken as a discriminatory action, and I believe it will be challenged. I think it puts the county in kind of a bad spot for that. With that being said, I don't believe I can agree to something that is, I believe, somewhat unenforceable without a real clear plan for me, and it has the potential to impact the taxpayers. I do support people being responsible for themselves and respecting their neighbors and their choices. And I think that people should keep that in mind when they're out and about. But I think putting a rule in order, or a rule in place is not the direction we should be going. I don't think it's really going to do much of anything. But anyway, that's just me. Thank you for the time.
Anybody else that has not spoken? All right, are you ready?
I'm going to actually bring up a couple of questions. Sorry, I don't want to overstep on somebody else who might have wanted to talk. Just for clarification, what in this new rule are you proposing that goes above the directive or the mandate from the governor?
Now, the plan that they have to submit to the health department for events is just a suggestion in the governor, governor's directive. This would, they would have to give a plan to us, and also, we are capping the event at 500. So, the governor doesn't have a cap on event sizes. It just is that they have to be able to comply with the directives of social distancing and masking. So, this would cap those events at 500.
So, cap the events at 500, and instead of suggest to provide a plan, now they would have to provide a plan. What will happen if an event happens, and they do not provide a plan to the health department? What is the consequence?
That, that would be a question for Travis. And I have one question for Travis as well. And I haven't really, I don't know the clear answer to this. So, if there's an event, there's an event arena or venue, an event venue, and then somebody comes in and has an event, and they present their plan to us, and then the directive is not followed, they don't social distance, they don't mask, who then is responsible for that? Is it the event planner, or is it the event venue?
I heard everything but the last two words, the event planner or the?
Event venue. Who is responsible for making sure the directives are met in this instance? Is it the venue that they're renting, or is it the event sponsor?
The, the way this is worded seems to put it on the event sponsor.
So, to my question, though, if somebody has an event, and they do not submit a plan to the health department to be approved, what, under this new rule, will happen to that event sponsor? I see that they're held responsible, but what is the consequence that they know? Like, I know that if I drive on a suspended driver's license, the consequence is that I revoke all rights to drive. I know that if I drive in a vehicle in a school zone, pass a speed limit, because those are examples that we've been given in this meeting, then I have a consequence, and that is I will get a ticket, a fine, and I will have to appear in court. With this rule, should we pass this through our vote today? Are we saying, hey, if you're going to do this, this is what is the consequence? Because I hate to tell my kids you're going to be in trouble without telling them what they're going to get in trouble with.
So, Ronald Lee, the, there's a, a couple of different issues. So, the statute that's listed here with regards to violations, the, that statute references that if anyone refuses or neglects to comply with this order, the state or local health officer can cause the order to be complied with, and initiate an action to recover expenses. There's been a question with regards to this kind of situation in terms of what those expenses are. Are those simply legal expenses? Or could they possibly be something along the lines of expenses associated with contact tracing that's due to cases arising out of this event? It's one of those things where the statute doesn't neatly fit this type of scenario. The way you see this more often, if a health officer says you need a certain particular type of wastewater process, and the person fails to do that, then typically, it's okay, the state can get an order to have that put in and then recover the expenses for having to have a contractor hired in to put in that type of wastewater service. It's not really geared towards a single, one-time event. So, that's why it's a, it's a very gray area, a subject of discussion, academic discussion among county attorneys as to what exactly that particular statute means. Just the next, the next section in the code also allows for criminal convictions and enforcement with fines and/or possible prison on, on some other subsequent convictions, I think. Again, there's also the possibility of injunctions, depending on the type of event that you're, that you're looking at. But injunctions are a whole lot more difficult, because you really have to specify irreparable harm, not just potential harm.
With this rule, there isn't anything that says what are the consequences, and what is the remedy? Is that what you're saying? At this point, we don't have that? And I guess it would go back to, if you're saying that contact tracing from an event, out of cases that arise from an event, we have an event that is maybe a trade show that's part of something. And how do you know that the two people who now test positive actually picked up the virus at the trade show? They didn't pick it up from the grocery store or from the restaurant they were at? So, I guess I'm just trying to see, if we were to use that as a measure, how do we then say, yes, it did happen at that event?
And that's one of the difficulties, it's my understanding, that Lewis and Clark is facing with regards to their Freedom Rally is, is, you know, being able to pin down that the, the spread of the virus came specifically from that, and not from, again, a kid coming home from school or from the grocery store, like you say. There is some specificity as far as penalties with regards to that next criminal section, but this 52-123 doesn't have anything specific. It really couldn't, because there's, again, even if you were talking in a traditional sense of wastewater processing, it's, it's not going to be something that the statute can say, here are the numbers that you're going to be dealing with. That's just going to depend on the situation that you're addressing. So, in this case, it might be dependent on the type of event or gathering that you're dealing with.
Right, so a type of event or gathering, an event that has 51 people at it, how, who's going to be monitoring? Who's going to be counting the heads for 40 people or 50 people? And then determining that those are the people that now we need to turn over for some kind of an injunction citation or charges to be. for some kind of an injunction citation or charges to be brought? Do we have enough people to do that? Do we have enough officers that are going to be able to go out and enforce or monitor such a rule?
I don't know. I've not received any word in terms of specific, at least with regards to this rule, specific request to have officers go and investigate this. So I don't know if this will simply be individuals who are at events who then submit complaints or, you know, individuals who are near those events, maybe not attending, but are aware of events. So there might be some citizen complaints rather than law enforcement investigation. And I'm not aware, and Tamale can address this in terms of whether or not the Health Department would actively be sending out folks. I suspect they don't have the resources for that, but...
Ronald Lee, I can answer one of the questions. When you say, you know, how do you know it's connected to something? There are two things there. We know that now COVID can be spread through droplets and aerosolization. So the droplets are a little heavier and they drop to a surface. So that's where the washing hands and cleaning comes into. The aerosolization, it can hang in the air for up to an hour. So think of it as cigarette smoke, right? Or as Bill would say, a skunk that hangs in the air. So that's why the masking is so important. So if you're going about your daily business or, you know, going into a convenience store, going into a grocery store, going to a trade show, and those, a person who was not masked coughed or sneezed, that could aerosolize and hang in that air for up to an hour, especially when ventilation isn't very well, very good. So that's the importance of wearing a mask in just consequential being exposed without knowing it. So that's why the masking is so important. As far as contact tracing into certain events, we had some events where people were sitting at round tables, no one wore a mask, and we had a positive. And then we would quarantine those people that sat with them. And we had, in one event recently, we did, we had eight positives in people who were all, all became positive from that one positive because we had to contact all the people within six feet, within 15 minutes. So that's how we prove at certain events, there are, they have been positives. Another one is we had an older gentleman that went to a trade show three days in a row, lived by himself. That's the only place he went. He became COVID positive and then he passed away. So we knew that's where it was because he lived alone. He was in his 90s. We know where he went and what his contact was. So there, it's events like that through the contact investigation. We can determine where they got it or we quarantine the people around the positive. And then we can say, yes, five of these eight people at the same table all converted and they were positive.
Those were all of my questions. Thank you for your time.
Carrie, did we miss any?
Kyle, I know you said something earlier, but did you have anything to add?
No, I think we've covered all my things that we, you know, we have seen large events that we know that that's our evidence of why we are looking at this order. We have taken some considerations about making sure that this was specific or indoors, not outdoors. And then I would also just note that I think this affects, we don't have that many large events facilities that can have these type of events. One of them is the counties, so I do think that would be easy to enforce on this.
Okay, thank you. Let me ask, well, Kyle, you're the last up. Would you make a motion that we put this on the table for approval?
Yes, so I...
I don't think, excuse me, I don't think we've heard from the other two board members in case we had any, they had anything.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, well, I asked if anybody else needed to speak, but I didn't hear anybody, so...
Okay.
Who did I miss?
Artis and Roger didn't say anything.
This is Roger. I don't have any further comments.
Okay.
And then this is Artis. I don't have any further comments at this time either.
Okay.
Thank you.
Back to you, Kyle.
Thank you, Ms. Berg. I move that we move agenda item number four for consideration.
And we need a second. For anybody.
Hi, this is Pete. I second.
Okay, just moving second that we move the health officer's order. I will vote last. Carrie, would you call the roll?
Do we have to do discussion? Any last discussion?
Any last discussion, of course.
I'd like to comment on large events in the Flathead. We've had multiple large events in the Flathead since March. I've sent you a list of it. There's a large one, March 17th, a large one, April 24th, many large events. The last one was the Flathead Fair. Tamale had given a report that over 40,000 people attended, and many board members lamented that people were not keeping social distancing. And Tamale herself admitted there was no spike in cases. So my point is there is no proof. And as County Attorney Honor said, there has to be proof. We have proof that it is not the case with the largest event in the Flathead. There are going to be lawsuits if we pursue this.
All right, I did hear that. Any other comments? And I'll ask Tamale to respond to that.
The difference there is that was an outdoor event. Now that we're moving indoors, we have seen several indoor events that are, have been large venues, and we have traced cases back to them because of the ventilation issue. And so we do have proven cases. And like I said, the one where the elderly man died.
Okay, Carrie, would you go ahead and call the roll?
Bukachak?
I vote no.
Haybar?
Vote yes.
Homequest?
No.
Larson?
No.
Noble?
Yes.
Skies?
No.
Waterman?
Yes.
Berg?
I vote yes. My count is four to four. Do you prefer, Carrie?
Yep, it's tied.
Okay. All right, let's, I'll remind everybody that we have several of us that have a meeting with the Preparation Agreement Group for the CHC. We have one other item on the agenda except for adjournment. So let's move this along. It's a press release that was drafted at the request of the board to be signed by the chairman of the board. That would be me. Can you move that? It's a two-page document. I think everybody has been provided with a copy, but let's put it on the screen. The principal author is Dr. Haybor. And I was the last editor, so it's going to be the last editor's version of it.
Could I ask for a clarification, please?
Please, go ahead.
Yeah, it was a tie vote, so that means it does not move forward. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
It takes five to three.
Okay, so now, if you might, if I can, say to the letter, we just got the revised edition here, I don't know, just before the meeting. I don't know if everyone's had a chance to look at it because I quickly scanned it. And it's considerably different than what I agreed to in our subcommittee. So I have some concerns about that, and we just got it. So I just wanted to see if everybody else had a chance to look at the new revised vision, version that we got just a few minutes ago.
Is there a call for comment?
I haven't had a chance to read it.
Okay. The only substantive changes that I recall is there are some stylistic changes. I made more paragraphs, so the paragraph's a little bit shorter, and focused on a particular issue in that paragraph. I removed the word spiked in terms of a reference to the number of cases. And I added in paragraph two what the forecast is, to over 2,000 cases, up from 1,000 from the last period. So it's 2,000 in October to November versus 1,000 September to October. I also understand that as chairman of the board, that I can issue my own letter. But this was, the concept here was to issue a board with the approval of subcommittee and reflecting the entire, the entire group of board members. There's one other issue at the bottom, if you can go to the bottom. I recall a comment from Dr. Annie, and I incorporated that at the very, very bottom. You can see in red, one dissenting member. At the time I redrafted it, I was only aware of one. So if there are more than one, I'd be happy to change that to two or three. There are eight members, so it takes a five to three to specifically approve it. And if it's not approved, I think I have the authority to issue my own letter whenever I want. So I'll leave that to muted inside. And given this, it's been delayed almost three weeks. We next meet about two weeks from now. And if you all demand that we wait another two weeks, you can think that's a good idea. I'm happy to do that. And if you want to be listed specifically at the bottom of the dissenters, I'm happy to do that.
So, can I say something or join in here?
Sure, sure. This is all for discussion, please.
So I want to thank the committee that worked on this because I know we spent a lot of time, Tamale, Pete, and Annie. And I thought we had something that was going to work for at least, you know, three, the majority. But as I said earlier, it has changed substantially from what I had agreed upon. I agree with much of it because I do agree that, you know, we should respect, we should try to, you know, respect our neighbors, wear a mask if we can, social distance, do the things we need to do to try to stop the spike. But I don't think that I can support this letter as written because there are things in here that I just, I can't, I can't support. So that's unfortunate, I think. But anyway, I wanted to thank the committee for their work. And I wish we hadn't changed it quite so much, but that's okay. Thank you.
And Bill Berg, you gave us, you gave us the option of waiting two weeks. And since we haven't had a chance to see it till right now, that would seem to make sense.
Okay. Ronald Lee, you're next on the picture. It just changed.
Well, so I want to take into consideration that the committee did do a lot of work on this. And I agree with Commissioner Homequest that it has changed from what we did see. And I know that this is coming out of committee, so I'm not sure if we did wait to have a public statement. A public statement is not, at this point, we've had a lot of public communication and a lot of public conversations. So a public statement that we don't agree on isn't really going to be beneficial, in my opinion. There are some things in this that I do question. So would the process be that we would be able to talk about the letter? Or does it go back to the committee for the committee to determine what that letter is going to look like? Ultimately, if it is a unified statement coming from us, the members of the board, I would hope that we would all have an opportunity to have some input on the letter.
Okay, thank you. Artis?
I think what we need to do is maybe revisit, have the committee look at it again because it is a total change from what we had saw before. And I actually have a different letter from first thing this morning, and Roger brought a different letter. So I think what we need to do is maybe look at this at our November meeting then and figure out what exactly we want to say to the public. But we do need to be somewhat unifying as well. So, but that's just kind of my thought process. And I'll let Roger speak then.
Well, I guess I didn't compare the previous one to the last version or the last rendition that's out to see how much substantive change has occurred. I guess I didn't see a problem with the contents of the letter as it is. But I would rather send this out with more people in favor of sending it out than having another split decision on something so that we appear to be more of a coherent board. So I guess if there's a way we can revise this within the next two weeks so that we do have something that would have more concurrence, then I would be in favor of that.
Tamale, we've been working on this for a long time. I don't think the sides are going to come together because I think anything that we would release would have to be so watered down that it would not be significant at all. It would, it would be just a meaningless something in the paper. I just don't think, I don't think it will ever come together. So I just, we've spent a lot of time on this, and I don't see the point of going forward. If the other people feel differently, please speak up. But we have gone over this letter exhaustively, and I don't see it coming together.
But Tamale, if I may say, this is not the letter that we worked exhaustively on. This is a different letter than what we worked on. That's all I'm saying.
I'll repeat. All I'm saying is I made a few stylistic changes in the size of the paragraphs. I put in the data on the forecast, which has not been countered or criticized at all other than stylistic issues. It tells a story. If there's any inaccuracy in here, it's a result of the committee's activities or watering it down to the point that it's nonsensical. I do agree that if we spent more time on it, Dr. Annie and Dr. Pete are so far apart in their view of the world and medicine that it's an irretrievable, it's an unbridgeable gap. And all we would do would be wasting the time. So, Dr. Pete, your thoughts?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate everybody's feedback. I think we did work hard. I agree that I don't think that Dr. Annie and I would be able to come together. And we certainly tried to. I, reading this letter and the couple of, and a couple of the differences that were added, I don't see, I don't see a big difference. So I guess what I'm curious about is what the, maybe from Pam's perspective, is what are the changes on here that we're not comfortable with?
Okay, yeah, the second paragraph, I'm not comfortable with that. I think we forecast, but I did challenge the numbers. I don't know that the numbers are what I had. And I was going to get with Bill on that because I just, I'm not sure that's correct. I added some verbiage of spiked instead of imminent threats or rise risen drastically. Some of the words changed, you know, that it can spread unless it's capable, you know, can spread. The wording we had in there before was possibly spread, you know, just a lot of verbiage. And then it says it's an imminent threat and things like that, just some verbiage. and then it says it's an imminent threat and things like that, just some verbiage. And we, the three of us, Tamale, Pete and I, I believe we came together with just a couple of words difference on the original message. So it's not like we didn't come together as a, you know, as a majority on the letter. And, but at the end of the day, a lot of it's changed for me, a lot of it's been taken out, there's verbiage added, which I can't, I can't substantiate. So that's kind of, I guess if that answers your question. I, I think that we can, as the three of us, still come together with something. I'm not sure that Annie can get there because she has said that she, were certain things she didn't want in the letter, which is cases and things like that. But that's her choice. But again, I got it, you know, five minutes before the meeting, there's stuff in here that I don't agree with, so I'm not willing to move any, I won't vote for it today. We can certainly take a vote if you'd like to. But yeah, that's too late. I don't, I think we need more time to look at these things.
And I would like...
That's my thing.
I would like to remind the board that when Pam Holmquist called a motion on the October 15th meeting, the motion was that the four of us would get together and come up with something unified and then that would come forth. This does not fit. I'm a quarter of that committee and I don't agree. I think it is, this letter is full of inaccurate and improvable statements. And so this does not, this does not even come close to fulfilling what Pam had called for at the last meeting as a motion. It doesn't even fit.
All right, I will, I will take control of the meeting here as we wrap up, we're running out of time. I will withdraw it and I will challenge Dr. Annie to provide the inaccurate and unprovable statements.
I sent those, I sent those in the last letter. I'll have to...
Please send them to me again.
Okay, I appreciate you, Bill.
Okay. We are just about out of time. Is there any other business for today? Hearing none, I'd like a motion for adjournment, which is not debatable. Well, come on, somebody do it.
Someone.
All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody.
Great meeting.